Can you hear it? Oh, there it is. It's working, Juana. You can, if you want. It doesn't matter.
I'm getting a message that I'm not plugged in and I don't know. Okay, that's where we go. Okay. Is this it?
Yes.
Okay.
So I heard that Brian's not here anymore.
No, Brian, um, his last official day will be, um... What is this? Oh, I've got a locker station. I haven't checked. There you are. Oh, you're going to be kidding me.
Just seeing this is counseling. Let me see. Oh, maybe I just won't. Trying to find the agenda today. Might just be out of... No, no, in Proma. Yeah, it's, it's, let's see. Okay, it's good. I'm good. Yeah. Soon as I get a board. Okay, they'll give that to you and then...
Oh, wonderful. On, on...
We have an issue.
Questions during the presentation or let him talk and then questions after that. You don't have time those. Does that make sense? Do you have the ability to stop and start the clock? I think so. Yes. A minute to start it.
Look at the computer set. In case a spicy fish overtakes you.
I figured. When I saw that.
Good afternoon. Usually we say morning, but good afternoon. Welcome to the September 16th, 2008, meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. Before I ask you to stand and join the board and I in the flag salute and offer a moment of silence, I would ask that you keep in your prayers the family and the friends of Mr. Max Corbett, a longtime instructor with Tulare Joint Union High School who basically ran the, uh, the high school farm. It's, it's not, uh, it's an interesting situation, of course, as an agricultural county, but not all of the high schools in the county have access to this. Mr. Corbett was a 30-plus year, um, instructor to the Ag students, uh, in the city of Tulare, but certainly an advisor to any Ag students throughout the county. And a very unfortunate accident on Sunday for Mr. Corbett, but I would just ask you during your moment of silence, because we all have things that we need to remember during that moment, but if you could also include Mr. Corbett's family and Mr. Corbett in your moment of silence, I would greatly appreciate it. Now we'll stand and salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the collective which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to go right to item five this afternoon. I think it's an item of interest. I think it's an item of interest and so we should probably start with the most interesting item on the agenda. And before I get into the procedure, this is a hearing and setting, I would just ask that everyone remember that we are all adults and we will all be respectful. We will respect all speakers. That we will ask that in the board chambers, that there be no outbursts or clapping or cheering. But, but certainly, uh, respect and, um, I would also ask no... This is an important issue to everyone, but no personal insults will be tolerated by the chair. It's, it's not the time and place for that. And I'm sure we're all good and I feel a little bit like everybody's mother. Uh, and my children will tell you even as adults I still lecture. But, uh, that being said, I apologize if I seem to be lecturing. Really would just like to make sure the proceedings are respectful and proceed as, as according. So therefore, the item before us is to resolve a bargaining impasse between the county and SEIU Local Union 521. Numerous bargaining sessions and one mediation session have failed to bring about an agreement. It is the duty of this board to decide how to resolve the impasse. The procedure will be as follows. The SEIU representative and the county negotiator may each speak for ten minutes. We will then allow public comment on the item for those who wish to speak to it. Under our rules of procedure, each speaker will be permitted to speak for up to three minutes and the total comment period will be limited to fifteen minutes. Then the, um, the representatives, the SEIU representative and the county negotiator may then each speak for five minutes in a rebuttal-type setting. And, uh, we will proceed from there. So if, uh, I think we're going to start with the SEIU, uh, representative. I'm not, is that Mr. Absher or I don't know who you've selected to be your main presenter today? It would not be Mr. Absher.
He's right here.
Oh, okay. You're welcome to either microphone, whichever you prefer.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm Kristy Sermersheim. I'm president of SEIU Five to One. And with me is the union negotiating team and the staff who've been participating in contract negotiations. Our team has given me the honor of leading this presentation and they're here, however, to help with anything that might come up. And we have our ten minutes divided up and a few other people will speak during that part of the ten minutes.
That would be great. Thank you.
First, I want to say this is a highly unusual proceeding. In the thirty-plus years I've been working in the labor movement in the California's public sector, I actually have never encountered this process. And at first glance, it seems pretty fair having each of us have equal time. But you do have to recall and remember that for the last several months now, you've had the opportunity to meet with the negotiators, the management negotiators in executive session for hours and hours if you've wanted to, hearing only their side of the story and looking at their documents, their costing and their information. So we just want to point out this bit of inequity and that, um, when we've asked to meet with you, either formally or informally, and when I personally called and emailed each of you last month just to discuss our crisis report about the decisions made not to negotiate, um, none of you did agree to meet with us. But we're glad we get to do this today and have this presentation. I also understand that this process is so rarely used, even here in Tulare, that it might be a little bit complicated and perhaps that's why the alternatives listed and described on the agenda today are somewhat different from what's written as alternatives in thirteen B of the County of Tulare's Employee Relations Act. In fact, the ERO gives you the authority to approve our recommendations as the settlement. And of course, we urge you to do that. If you cannot see your way clear to do that today, then we ask that you authorize your bargaining team to come back to the table and work out a fair settlement with us, fair to the employees of this county and to the community we serve. We ask you to give your negotiating team the authorization and the resources to make an improved final proposal and to move off their proposal. As you know, our members have been very active in supporting our proposals and this month they have voted to reject your last offer by an overwhelming ninety-eight percent. They understand that they deserve more and that without you making the right decisions here today, you will continue to exacerbate the high turnover, the low morale and the stretched and inadequate services that the residents of this county have to put up with and don't deserve. We have given you, um, the documents that make the comparisons and we sent them to you timely last Friday, but these, we had a typo in them on the names of the members. So you might want to make sure that you're using the one you received today because we want you to make sure you know which members are which. There are only about seven items remaining in dispute. Of course, these are the costliest. We're about three million dollars apart, as we can tell. And we believe that you should and can make the decision to find that money and to begin to treat your employees fairly and to make the right decisions for the community. Now that three million dollars isn't all county funds because if you spend it, it will be matched in federal and state monies for many of the employees you serve, which your own document points out. We have produced for you and for the public a document called Crisis in Tulare, which is the result, which shows what the results of the, this board and its predecessors have caused in making decisions which benefited the county management over the workers who provide the real hands-on service. If you wish, we can answer any specifics about that document too. We believe it, it shows that you can easily afford our proposals if you choose to make different decisions about your surpluses and fund balances and if you really do want to stop the employee and retention recruitment crisis. So the first issue is wages. This is simple. Your employees are very underpaid in comparison to nearby peers. They cannot continue to live here on wages you're offering. If you were to grant a five percent increase today, they would still be an average of eight percent below any nearby county. Which brings us to the equity study that we're proposing. We're not asking for anything now, just that you take the time to review comparisons and you meet with us about them prior to next year's negotiations. We would offer to assist you at this time, which we've done in many other counties, but if you don't want to do that, you can have your managers do that study independently. But either way, we think it would be helpful to both sides to know this information before we bargain next year. Health insurance is the other very huge item in this contract dispute. And you've heard many heartfelt stories which really hurt us when we heard them. I'm not sure that you heard them as clearly. You're going to hear more stories today, but this is really easy. We just want to have the same things that some of, that you've agreed with others. With the deputies, for instance, we want you to pay four hundred and sixty dollars a pay period to each person getting health insurance. We're glad that your proposal has finally decided to stop giving higher-paid people a much better health insurance package than lower-paid people. But now you need to fund it with four hundred and sixty dollars a pay period. Our paper, The Crisis in Tulare County, points out where you could find that money totally appropriately and you could use, for instance, the tobacco settlement money to pay for employee health insurance. The other two proposals we have cost nearly nothing or nothing. We just request that you meet with us to discuss the possibility, not the absolute, absolute, but just the possibility of including a childcare center in any new building you contemplate leasing or, or building in the next year of this contract. How could your team refuse to agree on something this simple just to talk with us? This seems like a no-brainer. And we've asked you to pay for hepatitis vaccinations for staff who may be exposed to this disease as part of their work. This seems a lot cheaper than paying the worker's comp and losing the skills of that worker. And they're going to have to be off work and you're going to have to find somebody to fill in for them. We're not even proposing that you supply these on demand to anybody who wants them, but just to people who ask. Then you consider it? And you can say yes or no. And we're asking that you, um, augment the cost of annual lab tests for any of our members who feel like they need a hepatitis test and can't, is not paid for fully in their insurance. So that's it. You can pay for these proposals. They cost just about three million generally over what you've offered, but much of it will be reimbursed by state and federal government. You can make the decision to do this. You can approve the morale. You can approve the health of your staff. And as the largest employer in this county, by paying your workers adequately, you can actually give a shot in the arm to the local economy. Our members protect the consumers. They support the agricultural industry. They answer emergency calls. They nurse the sick. They protect children and aged citizens from abuse and neglect. They collect the taxes and they appraise the property. They provide library service, mental health support, teach job training, child support and determine eligibility for services. They are the backbone of this community. They plan for the future here in this county. We urge you to look carefully at the proposal you have and to look at ours and to treat your staff and these vital individuals in your community fairly. It's well within your means and it would be the right decision to make. Thank you. Now I need to call up our next speakers for the remaining time.
Hello, um, my name is John Rodriguez. I'm a building inspector two for the county. I just wanted to tell you that, the board, that I was on the health, healthcare plan up until this year. I had myself and two kids on the plan in which I was paying almost eight hundred dollars a month. And that was at the five hundred dollar deductible. That didn't include office visits, prescriptions. So what I had to do, I had to get on my wife's plan, which is only a hundred and fifty dollars a month for the two of us. I had to go out on my own and in which I pay only two hundred and fifty-six dollars for my two kids. And that's a zero deductible. So for a family of four not on the county healthcare plan, I'm paying less than if I were on the plan. I'm saving myself almost two hundred dollars a month in not being on your plan that you provide for us. I believe that this is a tragedy, that the biggest employer in this county cannot provide affordable care for us, their employees. Nor are you willing to help compensate the high cost of such healthcare for your, for your, for us, your employees. You, the board, should be ashamed. Thank you.
Sir, we're down to about fifteen seconds. Are you able to complete your statement in that time?
I'm not, ma'am.
Well, you know...
And he'll go under the presentations.
Well, that's what this is. This is your ten-minute presentation.
No, I mean that we're...
Public comment.
Oh, public comment part, okay. Okay. So would you like to wait until then?
I'll wait.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Now we will hear a presentation from, oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking around for you, Mr. Huntley. There you are.
Chairman and members of the board, I'd like to begin in a non-substantive way of indicating that, uh, the most positive aspect of the negotiations experienced from my point of view has been the fact that there has been perfect civility from day one through the process in spite of the disagreements about where we should end up. Given the timeframes, I'm going to move quickly through the material, but I will certainly be available to answer questions. We commenced negotiations in April of two thousand and eight. We had twenty-seven sessions. We had an impasse declared in April and then an unsuccessful mediation, uh, on the ninth. Today's proposal, that is the proposal that is included in the, your agenda packet, was a change from the proposal prior to our mediation session. So this is the latest set of information. I want to focus again due to the limited time. I'm not sure what the basis is for SEIU's representations of cost, but this total package in our estimate would cost about twenty-one point eight million. And that's really about seventeen point six percent of the hundred and twenty-three million total payroll, including benefits, uh, that are a function of that. It's, it's a, it's a huge number. The county proposal is, is as, as been reported, a two-point-seven-five percent increase, the five hundred dollar one-time pay adjustment. I'll come back to that. We have substantial equity adjustments as a result of the reorganization of IT. And I want to talk about the health plan improvements. Bottom line for the county is four-point-eight-five million. And that as a percent, each cost is four-point-four percent. This next chart is particularly interesting because the reality is that historically, the union and the county have negotiated different packages associated with the benefits. So if you look at this particular package, you will see that the management group nineteen took over a period of years, increased their benefit amount by twelve percent. You'll note that SEIU, which was then bargaining unit four, increased their benefit amount to six and C-Capes remained at two percent. So the question is why did that happen? As the next chart shows, this is the history of pay increases. And what we see here is the C-Cape bargaining units made the choice to take their pay increases as, in salary, uh, as compared to, uh, the other bargaining units. And when we get to the third, this is a combination. This now takes how much was paid for, uh, the salary increase and how much was granted for the benefit amount increase. And thus, over the time period, actually, SEIU, excuse me, the, the four C-Cape units are first, the, um, uh, SEIU unit is second, uh, and, or the management unit is second and SEIU is third. But the reality is, it has been the union's choice to divert the money differently. So when they now talk about how there is not money available for the health insurance, that is driven significantly by the fact of decisions that were made at the bargaining table over the last six years. This next chart looks at two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine. And for two thousand and eight, we're talking about the minimum benefit amount and how much the county pays. In two thousand and nine, the county, under its proposal, would still pay a hundred percent of the minimum benefit amount for the thousand-dollar deductible plan. We would increase the contributions, this is at the minimum benefit amount, to sixty-two percent for the dependents and forty-three percent for the family. Let's drop down to SEIU unit four because they had opted for more money going into the benefit amount rather than salaries. Sixty-two percent is sixty-seven. So, members of SEIU unit, the average salary there being fif- uh, fifty-eight eighty-six, uh, or the average benefit amount being fifty-eight eighty-six, over two-thirds of the cost of the employee plus one dependent in the thousand-dollar deductible plan are included. So it, it's not practical nor feasible for us to look at the benefit amount separately from the salary. And the equity is demonstrated between management and the employees. And I would point out that the proposals from the Service Employees International Union have been set forth in terms of percentages. They haven't been set forth in terms of flat dollar amounts. So this is historically, uh, what we've done. Quickly, right now, the difference from this year to next, if you have the county's health insurance for a dependent child, you're out of pocket per month, not per pay period, is three hundred and forty-nine. The county's proposal reduces that to two-eighty-one. For same thing, dependent who is a spouse, this year you're paying four-oh-nine, next year you would pay three-forty-two per month. Same thing with the family plan. Let's quickly look at the five hundred dollar deductible because that is also, uh, a slightly better plan. And even in the case of the five hundred dollar deductible, the out-of-pocket expense for the dependent child or children, instead of being four-forty, uh, four-forty-four a month, drops to three-eighty-one. The county's proposal is, is predicated on putting more mo- more dollars into the health insurance in the dependent care area. And it's set forth in all of the charts that you've just looked at. And because of the length of the time, we, we have presented information related to this to the bargaining team. They're aware of these numbers. Uh, and it just, the public needs to be aware of these numbers too. The other thing I would like to point out is the county has made a significant effort in getting the cost of health insurance under control. It's not enough just to redirect the dollar so more dollars go to the employees on an even keel basis based upon what their dependent coverage they have. We've actually been able to significantly reduce the premium increases. And this is for the thousand-dollar deductible plan, Blue Shield. And this includes dental and vision, thirteen percent to eight percent to seven-point-three percent to four percent, contributing to the affordability of the plan. And we're hopeful that we can continue to do more. Some facts. I would like to then reiterate this point that C-Cape made the choice. The union chose to take their money in salaries and they are at a two percent of salary for the calculation of their benefit amount. And the fact that the SEIU unit has six percent, I think, is adequate evidence that it was up to the employees' which choice to make. Let's talk for a moment about waiving the insurance coverage. The county has a policy which allows us, uh, allows employees to waive... employees to waive the insurance if they're covered elsewhere and take that money in cash. The reality is, nobody else does that anywhere. The county did make a proposal to SEIU offering to pick up 50% of the dependent cost if they would reduce for those employees who are waiving the insurance to the $1,000 per year, which is what we have with the fire department. But none of the other counties or cities around here will give you the amount of dollars that you would otherwise be receiving to pay for the health insurance if you don't take it. So there is money there that can be diverted, but you can't have your cake and eat it too, in the sense that you can't take the money as cash and then not put it back into the insurance plan. The goal of the county this year and last has been to start moving toward more dollars for benefits, the same number of dollars regardless of pay, and not tie it to percentages, which is what I just said. Basically, the benefit increases are in dollars, and it's based on dependents. The $500 one-time pay adjustment is more dollars, is the same amount of dollars for everybody, but the impact for the lower-paid employees is significantly different than from the higher-paid employees. And so for those folks who have felt frustrated about the county's approach, I think there needs to be some recognition that we have made changes. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Huntley. I just want to, I want to make sure I clarify, because this is a new proposal that we're looking at today.
The proposal that I just presented in terms of what the county's position was?
No.
That is not a change. That was what we had at the bargaining table and...
But the other proposal has changed somewhat.
The SEIU proposal, they had significantly changed their proposal. They eliminated, they reduced their pay increase from an 8% to 5% request, and they further reduced their request, or they eliminated their request for a sixth pay step. Those were the two significant changes between their last proposal prior to mediation. I'm not sure what the three is, but I'm sure you'll have a speaker to talk about if there was another one.
Thank you, Mr. Huntley. Okay, we will now move to the public comment, the 15 minutes worth of public comment. And this can be, you know, a minute at a time, three minutes at a time, but we want to stick to our 15 minutes.
I have a packet for each of you if you, somebody want to take this to you. I have one for Jean and Helen also.
Thank you.
My name's Rob Milner. I work with the Tulare County Agricultural Commissioner's Office. I'm here to address the salary inequities, the workload, and the loss of employees in our department to other counties and private industry. Over the last three years, we've been suffering a 70% turnover rate in our department, which is extremely abnormal. Normally, we bring attention to something along these lines when we're at 50% or so. But this, this turnover can be related directly to the lower salaries that our inspectors are having to receive here in Tulare County. Our journeyman-level inspectors make 19% less than the inspectors in our neighboring Kings County and 14% less than Fresno County. Intra-County, look at the departments and what our inspectors make. We make 19% less than the assessors, health, and dairy inspectors. But we have higher requirements than those other departments, too. To be an inspector here in Tulare County, we have to have seven certificates. These other intra-county departments only have to have one certificate. So the requirements to be an agricultural inspector is much harder, and our pay is greatly reduced. I've provided you guys with three documents there. There's a cover letter explaining the purpose of each document. These documents should give you a clear insight to our problems and why we're here to ask for your help. As a taxpayer, this matter deserves your attention. I appreciate you taking the time to look at it.
Juan, could you freeze the time? Freeze the time, please. I do have one quick question I may, Madam Chair. Your second point, 70% turnover for act commissioner inspectors, how many inspectors are there?
If you look at document number two, there's some graphs in there and it compares...
How many are there? I'm sure you know.
There's 35 active inspectors working, but 53 total.
And then 70% in how many years? That per year?
Per year.
What was the turnout? You said 70% turnover. How long did it take to achieve that 70% turnover?
Three years.
How many?
Three years.
Three years.
And it takes up to three years to get an inspector qualified that they can even be out on their own, sign the documents. Federal documents take three years of training to get up to where you're certified to be able to. And then we lose those people prior to them even becoming certified. Currently, we don't have enough qualified people because of the people leaving. If I were to leave right now, there's nobody to promote up into my position.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milner. That's a well-organized and nice presentation. Next, sir.
My name is Richard Kelsey. I'm a Mental Health Tech Two. I've been working for the county of Tulare since April of 2003. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before this panel today. I've been asked by my fellow Bargaining Unit Four employees to speak about the difference in pay scales between the Tulare County employees and those employees of the same job classification in any of several counties close to ours. I would quote Initiative Four of the county's Strategic Management Plan. It states, "Provide a qualified, productive, and competitively compensated workforce." However, the county has consistently failed to achieve this goal. As far back as 2001, a grand jury report showed rampant low morale among county employees, and that a majority of workers were concerned with the low wages and benefits they receive, as well as how it affects turnovers and workload. In a comparison of eight of Tulare County's most common job classifications with nine neighboring agencies, county employees earned an average of 13.3% less than their peers at other agencies. Employees in some positions earn up to 17.5% less. In the Office Assistant III classification, just for instance, City of Visalia employees make more than $11,000 a year, more than their counterparts in Tulare County. So we don't have to look very far, just across the street, to see comparisons. Tulare County employees continue to fall further behind as they have received lower annual raises than employees in neighboring counties. These adjustments are less than what comparable workers in Kings County at 12%, Fresno County at 11.75%, and Madera County at 7.5% earned over the same period. The growth in population has increased the demand for county services. Despite an increase in revenues of 35% in annual budget surpluses over the past several years, the county budgeted for fewer employees in 2007 than it did in 2001. This growing disparity between Tulare County workers and workers in other counties is not only affecting the quality of life for Tulare County employees, but also the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a nurse in Tulare County. I've worked in the clinics and...
I'm sorry, ma'am, we just need your name.
I'm sorry. My name's Catherine DeYoung. I'm a nurse. I've worked in your clinics and in your jails for over a decade now. I can't count how many times I've trained nurses and a year, maybe a little more than a year later, given them fair well parties when they move on to employers that pay them better. County's habit is to hire new grads without skills. They get, they develop their skills and they get their experience here at Tulare County, and they move on to an employer who pays them appropriately. You found the money to recruit and retain upper management, but our managers need a qualified workforce to provide quality services to the residents of Tulare County who deserve that. They voted you into office. We need you to support us so that we can support them.
You? Yes, sir?
Greg Gomez, Unit Seven representative. I've been with, I've been working with the county since 1994. Before then, I was washing cars on Mooney Boulevard for $4.25 an hour. The, working for the county was, was a great promotion for us. Recently married, and then we had just had a daughter that was premature. We were on Medi-Cal at the time, and this was a great way to put them on insurance, you know. And for $100 a pay period, I could put all of them on insurance. Right now, to do that, it would cost me $500 out of pocket. There's no way that we could afford that, even with the wages I currently make after promoting several times. So this is, I'm just one of the people that is faced with this all the time, this decision, every open enrollment. I wish I could add them all. But even with our deductibles, the way they are, and our co-pays, there's just no way I could do that. So now I have to turn to healthy families for my children. My wife is on the insurance because there's no other way I could cover her. And that's, that's where we are.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mark Ariza. I'm an employee. I'm a child support officer. Been here working for the county since 2002, May. Very happy here. This is my home. This is where I grew up. Grew up in Woodlake, graduated from Woodlake High School. I'm a local, and I, I plan to stay here. This is my home, and this is where I plan to, to raise my kids. Speaking of kids, I'm here to speak on behalf of the many employees who have families. I have five children myself. And with, along with the full-time job, 40 hours here with the county at Child Support, I also, to maintain my household, must work part-time. That takes time away from my children, unfortunately. I must work 15 hours at our local Sears store. And that's not, that's not a very uncommon story here, gentlemen and Madam Chair. We are, we are strapped with the income that we're receiving right now. We look to, to hopefully have your consideration in giving us a pay increase that, that will allow us to continue to live here. You know, this is where I grew up. This is where I want my children to grow up, you know, has a beautiful view of the Sierra. I grew up with the mountains in my backyard. You know, this is where I want to live. And to do that, I have to maintain two jobs. Right now, we're at a point where my wife works full-time, and, and now we're trying to figure out how we're going to figure, how she's going to be able to get a part-time job. It's really tough out there. I just want you to realize that, you know, we're just looking for a decent wage so that we, so basically, if I had a better job, a better-paying job, I might be able to stay home with my kids. You know, Sunday night, my boys, it's 7 o'clock. I just got off of shift, you know, at my other job. My boy's looking at me because he wants to play football. You know, I had to drag myself outside because they need time from me, too. But, you know, if, if you would just please consider the families out there that need more time with their families, I really appreciate it. Because my, my story isn't uncommon. There are many employees that have two, two jobs trying to make it today, in today's, today's economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ariza. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Susie Cox, and I have worked for the county for almost 32 years.
Excuse me, could you move closer to the microphone? Thank you.
Do you want me to start over? I'm Susie Cox, and I have worked for the county for almost 32 years. I, this is beyond my comprehension that the county administrators can sit here and think that the past years, it has been fair that their insurance is 100% covered. Ours is not. They continue to get 8% and 9%, 10% raises, but you aren't willing to give us anything. We, we keep falling lower and lower and lower and lower, and administration keeps going higher and higher and higher. And I just, I don't understand how you can think that that's right and that that's fair to us that are doing the work. If we, if we didn't do our work where we are, the higher-ups couldn't do your work where you are. It takes us all to get the end result. And I think you need to, you say you appreciate us, but it's time to prove it, because we feel we are not appreciated at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Stephen Lloyd, and I would just like to address the, the hidden cost of high turnover. Prior to working here at the county, I worked for a large mental health HMO, and I was the clinical trainer. And we calculated that it took between five and six months before an employee began to bring in more money than it cost us in training and in wages. And working here in the county, I'm just, from my previous, previous experience, it looks to me like it's at least that much here, maybe even a little, a little longer before someone begins to produce enough to bring in more revenue than it's costing the county. So I would just say that any decision you make here today, or in the future, that reduces turnover is going to increase revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Margie Renfro. I represent Bargaining Unit One. I'm the clerical staff. I'm capped out as an 083. I've worked with the county for 14 years. And in the last 10 years, the highest raise I have gotten has been $36 into my paycheck. The lowest raise I have gotten has been $17 into my paycheck. With the current raise that you're asking to give us or wanting to give us, that is going to put maybe $20, maximum $35. That's going, not going to be enough to make my co-pay at the doctor's office or pay my gas. It will not give me a full tank of gas. It might give me a half a tank of gas. Everything in our unit is so tight that many of the people that are in our division, there's six of us girls, five of us girls have jobs on the sides or hobbies that bring in extra income. For us, a 27 cent raise in the can, the price of a can of beans, is a big difference to us when we're planning our meals, when we're planning whatever we do, any family functions we do. We really do need a raise. We deserve a raise. We work very hard for the county, and we love this county. We love our jobs. Please, we need more. We need to be able to pay our bills, our taxes, and take care of our families decently.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Madam Chair, Board, my name is John Roller. I work for the Tulare County Assessors Office. I'm a supervising auditor appraiser at that position. With the concerns with the county right now, our retention of help, I reiterate, I've heard here already today, I have eight auditor appraisers underneath me. Of those eight auditor appraisers, I have two that have more than a year experience. I've got six, well, I've got five that have less than nine months' experience, and I've got an open position right now. We've been recruiting for a year and a half trying to fill these positions. And these aren't low-paying positions. These are $50,000, $55,000 a year positions. With the turnover and help, my duties, basically, I handle assessment appeals, processing season, audit workload, plus training of new auditor appraisers. My salary is not bad, but my full-time today is spent in training new auditor appraisers and not really performing the other tasks that my job have. The biggest bit, you know, problem, you know, we wish we knew exactly what it is. It's partly wages. It's partly benefit package. We cannot retain new employees at this point in time. And this is a situation that's been going on for approximately 30 months. I'm still looking for a position to fill. I've been trying to fill a position. I can't even get applicants to fill for the positions. You know, bottom line is, I'm sure everybody's going to say the same thing. It's wages and benefits that are, you know, people can take the job, get a little training if they're built, and go someplace else. And not necessarily to the public unit. They go out into private industry also. It's a situation that has to be stopped, or the salaries you're paying me and a lot of your supervisors is basically wasted simply on training. Plus, the trainees aren't getting the job done for you. They're just not trained to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Roller. Yes, sir?
Good afternoon. My name is Stephen Prakoski. I'm a deputy public defender for Tulare County. I have been so for about six years. I'm not a member of SEIU. I'm a board member of the Government Lawyers Association of Workers. There are three of the six board members from our organization here today to support SEIU and to urge the board to see fit to grant SEIU their requests. We, too, are at impasse, and there are several things that ring true to me from the speakers that I've heard earlier. For example, I have two jobs. For example, I cannot afford to pay for my children's health insurance, even using county pre-tax dollars on the current plan.
Go ahead and finish.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So there are some startling similarities and several dissimilarities between members of SEIU and the members of the Government Lawyers Association of Workers. But one thing that seems to be clear is that rather than paying employees upfront here in Tulare County, Tulare County seems intent on training the employees who will work in neighboring counties. Public Defender's Office has lost 43 attorneys. In the last 120 months, eight of them have been lost in the last six months. Three-quarters of those have gone to Ventura County. We estimated for the county that every time we lose an employee with two years of experience or more, the cost, the real cost of that loss is about $250,000. It doesn't make sense. We have had the county acknowledge that our salary survey data is correct and accurate and reflects that we are underwater versus our compatriots in other counties by as much as 20%. We understand the issues between SEIU and ours are different. We understand the issues between SEIU and ours are different, but we are here today, and that is the Government Lawyers Association of Workers, to indicate to the county and to SEIU our support and to urge the county to see fit to grant their requests. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Appreciate all of you that took the time to come up and comment. We do appreciate it. We'll now move to the rebuttal phase, the five-minute rebuttal. Miss, where did Christie go? Is she going to be doing that or... There she is. I'm sorry. Will you be doing that, Christie?
Albert and I are going to be together.
And I'm calling you Christie because I don't know if I can pronounce.
If you say Christie from the union, that will work. No problem.
Okay.
I've had this name a long time. All right, I want to introduce Albert Carlson, our research director.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name is Albert Carlson. I'm the research director for Local Five to One. And I just wanted to say a couple of quick things today about some of the things we've heard today. I think one of the key facts that sort of got lost in the proposal by management was that after all the contracts and negotiations that have happened, SEIU members are still at least thirteen percent behind and as much as seventeen percent behind in pay compared to comparable employers around the area and counties and cities. But in addition to that, the average amount of healthcare dollars received by employees is around fifty-one hundred dollars, which means that if you wanted to get healthcare for your family, you have to pay almost ten thousand dollars to get family coverage here for the average, based on the average amount an employee gets. That's why less than two percent of all SEIU-represented employees can afford or get family healthcare coverage with the county. That is five times lower than the next nearest county like Fresno County. And other neighboring employers have as much between twenty and thirty percent of their employees who are able and can afford to enroll their families in healthcare coverage. So I think that's facts that didn't get quite communicated in management proposal that I think you need to consider. So we think that's a very serious problem. Thank you very much.
Those were a lot of facts. I hope I took accurate notes. Thank you.
We also have them in our booklet. I just would like to say that those graphs were quite intriguing and we saw them. But what you need to understand is decisions made over the last six years are just what they are. Decisions made over the last six years, that's why you bargain every couple of years, to fix what went wrong or what didn't work. And all of these people are now in SEIU and they expect to have a good contract, but it doesn't matter what the organizations decided last time, they had to make a Sophie's Choice, health insurance or wages, wages or health insurance. The two of them made a different choice. But both of them, right now today, are still way below in comparable health insurance and way below in wages. We don't want to have to keep making those bad choices. We are still behind in every way, in both of those ways, and so looking at the history doesn't really help there. I also want to point out that we did make a different proposal than we made in mediation. Your team decided to use the mediation as a perfunctory exercise to move on to the next step. So we really couldn't make our proposal to you. And if you'll notice, we have made a proposal, we've had discussions. We have grand-parented out the issue about being paid some money if you don't have health insurance. We have a way to the end for that and that hasn't been acknowledged. And I did acknowledge that you started to move against the managers getting more pay than, more health insurance than non-managers. We're glad about that, but it's not far enough. We need to have it paid for at four sixty. Did you know that in the leaflet that announces the open window for health insurance here in this county, there is an explanation of how you do apply for government aid for your children and your family? In your leaflet to your members that work full-time? That's pretty humiliating. The only employer I know who does that and who calls government aid their health plan is Walmart. That's the only one I've heard of before that. And now this county government, the largest employer in this county, has chosen to do that. So we just need you to look at our documents. We would be glad to have a real, honest discussion and costing, which hasn't been an opportunity we've had. However friendly we've been, it's been difficult for us to actually get down to the numbers in negotiations. And we think that if you need that, we're capable of doing it, here tonight or later. We want to make sure that you understand that the costing that we got today, I think, was from the old numbers on health insurance and other things and that our costing is much more accurate. So we think it's very important. We're glad you listened to us today. We would like to be listened to in much more detail if you're not willing to just right now say, yes, our proposal's the right thing and to be able to get a contract that these workers deserve and that the community deserves so that we can have coworkers working here, providing the services and not have to do two and three jobs here when we're at work here and then our second job that we get paid for somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. Huntley? Sorry, wanted I give you time?
I think there are some very eloquent comments and concerns and I continue to be impressed with the professionalism of the representatives of SEIU as they present their case. There are a couple of things I should clarify. One was sort of the last statement about the costing today from the county wasn't reflective of the new proposal. Actually, that's not accurate. The proposal that you provided for us on Friday, which we costed out, has a twenty-one point eight million dollar price tag and seventeen point six percent increase. The proposal, the last proposal with the eight percent salary and five percent for sixth step was a twenty-five million and a twenty point six percent package. So we did update those numbers. I don't disagree with the fact that history is history and where we are now is where we go forward. But the simple reality is, it sometimes is unfortunate that people make statements which aren't supported by the facts. It is factual that the pay increases for Bargaining Unit Nineteen, which is the middle management unit, have increased sixteen percent in the last six years, while the pay increases for Sea Cape have increased twenty-five point five percent. And when the speaker comes up and says managers are getting nine percent and other things, that's simply not true. The other thing that hasn't been taken into account here is a number of the managers are not on a pay plan where they get an automatic five percent increase. And so when they get a three percent increase, that doesn't even match the merit increase that comes forward. But I won't argue with you. The managers are paid more. And people in this room are concerned about the dollars they have for themselves. I think we need some acknowledgement, folks, of the direction that we're going, not only in terms of putting more dollars in the hands of the lower-paid employees, both as a matter of cash and in the benefit amount, but also in terms of the effort that's made to get the cost of the health insurance under control. There was a statement made that the mediation was a perfunctory effort. I believe that the county's representatives said at the bargaining table that this was our last, best, and final offer. And that usually means it's our last, best, and final offer. We went in there to see if there was some possible solution. We had some potential alternatives on language issues that never developed simply because there was no agreement apparently going to be reached on the dollar issues. I think it's a very emotional statement and it's one I... There is no good answer to this and I know how people are going to react, but I'm going to say it anyway. The announcement that we put in our health insurance brochure that there are government aid programs for our lower-paid people, yes, we do that. What I need to say to you is, folks, that it doesn't matter if you work for Tulare County, Barra County, Kings County, Fresno County, Kern County, if you are in an entry-level position and a single parent with two children, you're going to be eligible for welfare benefits or food stamps or something of the like. The environment in the valley is such, whether that's private sector or public sector, it's not a good thing. And the county would like that to change. But do not, if you will, indict the county on what is a general existing practice throughout the Central Valley. And we all need to work together to make things better. I think that covers the points I wish to make.
Thank you, Mr. Huntley. Questions, comments, whatever, board members, not at this time? Okay. Madam Counsel, I believe we have this on for closed session.
Madam Chair, you have items, I'm going to say A through F. Sorry, yes. A through F on your board's closed session, regular agenda, and addendum.
Okay. Well, at this time, I believe the board would like to adjourn to closed session and have some discussion about what we've heard here this morning and the plan going forward. So we will adjourn.
We're certainly willing and capable to be able to help you out if you have a question and if you think some of that information, you know, if you saw the documents, you'd understand.
We will take your documents with us, Chrissy.
We'll be right here with you.
Okay. I have no idea how long we'll be gone, but we will be back. The board will now come back into session with the task in front of us. Mr. Rousseau, would you like to address us?
Yes, I would. Gene Rousseau, county administrative officer. I'm glad everyone is here today to discuss this very important matter. This has been, this particular subject, the salaried benefit package for our county employees. I've said it when I first started in June of 2004 and I'll say it again, it is the number-one issue and challenge that the county administration faces in managing this county. It amazes me, and it's always amazed me, how our department heads, managers, division managers, supervisors, work in an environment where they have high turnover. You know, I've been a manager and a supervisor and a division chief during my tenure and it was always very difficult to lose folks. So, you know, you've spent a lot of time, you've made plans for those folks to work up the chain and they leave you and you have to start over. So I'm very sympathetic and county administration is very sympathetic to this challenge. I just want to go back a little bit and talk about where we started or what the ground was like when I came on board. When I came on board, we had done a survey of a number of employee classes throughout the county. In fact, I believe virtually every class was surveyed in comparison to standards, six to nine counties that we compared it to. The counties in the valley and a few other counties outside the valley. And those surveys were overwhelmingly negative in terms of where we compared with our brethren. We had folks that were, in some cases, forty percent out, thirty-plus percent out and what have you. We also were aware at that time that we were only paying about seventy percent of employees' health insurance premiums. Zero for family. Zero for family. We also had the, we had a retirement plan, was well-funded, but it was on the lower, is the lowest plan in the state. And so we took, we established a benefit committee that looked at our benefit package and tried to come up with a comprehensive holistic package that would improve county retention and help us recruit folks. And this is what we did. We also decided to step away, and I'm glad Mr. Huntley pointed this out in his eloquent comments early on, about we wanted, we recognized that along the way, some of the upper-end employees had received probably higher pay increases than the lower-end folks. So we wanted to go to a different approach. And what we did is we came up with a dollar amount for each unit. And we looked at, where can we put this? Where can we help in the benefit package to improve retention? And what we did was, we bumped every insurance coverage that we, for single employees, we paid for that a hundred percent. And in some cases, that was a thousand dollar to a fifteen-hundred dollar increase in insurance reimbursement to employees. So employees went from approximately seventy percent of their single insurance coverage being paid for by the county to a hundred percent in the last negotiation period. We also changed our retirement prospectively from two at sixty-two to two at fifty-seven, a very unusual, highly unusual thing based on some of the pension problems and challenges that were going on then and are still going on today. Then we developed an equity plan, like I mentioned earlier, and we bumped up employees that were thirty percent out. We gave them a three percent base and a two percent equity. Is that enough to bring them, make them competitive? No. We didn't say it was at the time. We looked at our finances, we tried to do as much as we can in terms of sustainability and what have you, and we put as much on the table as we felt we could. So let me recap that last package before this one. We improved employees' insurance, we brought them up to a hundred percent from approximately seventy percent. We changed your retirement prospectively from two at sixty-two to two at fifty-seven. And we gave you approximately five percent salary increases, three percent base and two percent equity for three straight years. Again, is that enough? No. Is it a step in the right direction? We'd like to think it is. Do we have a ways to go to get to where we want to be? Look around you. We absolutely have a ways to go. What we're trying to do, what's changed since that first scenario in the last few months and really in the last year is, we've had a significant downturn in the economy. We all know that the housing market has virtually collapsed. I was homesick yesterday and watched our capital markets virtually almost disintegrate in front of me. And I'll go into some of the challenges there. We have our federal government that's been running four-hundred-billion-dollar deficits for seven or eight straight years. And we're either in a recession or we're in deep economic trouble, depending on what you want to call it. The state also has presented challenges. Now, going through the budgetary environment that came up with the decision that we are discussing today. We have a state budget that is, depending on what day and what time you look at it, is at least fifteen billion dollars upside down. And they're going to go after a lot of the programs that unfortunately you folks work That coupled with other challenges have made this budgetary, this budget and the decision to go forward and to make, and to come up with negotiations very difficult. That's why we chose to negotiate a one-year budget, because we don't know what the future holds. You know, we've been blessed with a huge housing boom. It has allowed us to do some things that we weren't able to do in the past. And we had a choice. We could restore some positions that we'd lost along the way. We could give employees as much of the increase in those revenues as we can or a combination of the two. Oh, and by the way, we have capital needs. Old facilities. Approximately fifty of our one-hundred-and-twenty facilities are so old, we don't even know how old they are. And the other fifty are between twenty-five and fifty years old. So we have a lot of challenges. We looked at this budget, we looked at the assessed value increase, which turned out to be a little over five percent. We know that the assessor is going to reduce additional values further. We know that the northern part of our San Juanquin Valley, one of the counties that's had negative assessed value growth and little to no growth in sales taxes. We're dealing with a very difficult situation. What we've tried to do is, what we and the board have tried to do is put as much on the table as we feel we can at this time. Is it enough? No. No. Is it a step in the right direction? Yes. What are some of the other things we've done? We've frozen, we've frozen higher-paid employees' flex benefits that receive more flex benefits in their health insurance needs. My flex is frozen. I don't need more than what it takes to cover my family. And thank God I'm in a position to cover my family. Again, we're all very sympathetic to what you're going through. We're doing what we can. We put more money on the table for the families. Again, is it enough? Are we going to... Are we going to correct this situation in one or two bargaining sessions, not sessions, but periods? No, we're not. We did, it took us a long time to get to this point, it's going to take us a long time to dig out. And we need, and we ask, and I ask you for a little bit of patience, and I know you've been patient, I know you feel like you've been shorted, and, and, and you have a right to feel the way you do. We have, we are trying to present a budget and present a salary and benefit package that we feel is sustainable, and that we can carry on. We, we've been very prudent and very fiscally, fiscally adherent to, to the principles that have kept, to put us in the position we're in today. You know, if you look at some of our neighbors, excuse me real fast. If you look at some of our neighbors, some of our neighboring local governments are asking for givebacks from their unions. They've overextended, and they're laying off folks. We're not doing any of those. The package that we have on, on, on the plate today, and that we put on the table for you folks, is what we feel is sustainable, long-term. And it's just a one-year package. Beyond this one year, we don't know what the future holds. But, but you have this board and, and my, in my desire to improve your, your stake and what you get paid. You know, the choice is, and a comment was made, that, that, you know, forget adding new, new positions, just give all your, your money to, put it all in the salary benefits. And you know what? That's something that is very tempting. We've had those discussions. We've had the infamous three-bucket discussion. You either want restored positions, you either put the money into salary and benefits, or by the way, your, your capital facilities are crumbling around you, you need to do something there. Where do you put it? And we feel like, we'd like to think we've, we've made some wise choices, and we've added a little bit here and there, and with sustainability in mind. So, with that in mind, looking at our fiscal house, you know, I read a report today that some of the fiscal decisions have, have caused, have caused this county to be in the position that it's in, and, and I think that's very regrettable, especially when you consider the health and fiscal condition of some of our neighboring counties and some of our neighbors. You know, we have a retirement plan that's approximately ninety-five percent funded, with fifteen million dollars in debt. That's not much. You've got other local jurisdictions that have one billion plus in pension debt. You have, we have a workers' comp fund that's, that's fully funded, and it's going to provide from flexibility in future budget periods. And we haven't just, we haven't just settled on and just accepted our stake in where we're at. We're trying to be creative as can be to continue to reduce operating costs. So, what have we done? We, we created our own fire department. We, we kicked the state to the curb, but we, we had a seventy-eight-year-old contract, we decided we can do it better, have better services and save money, and we've done it. This, this year's budget for the fire department will be the second straight year we will have a decrease in their fire budget. What does that mean? The fire budget isn't taking money from the general fund. The general fund is what pays you folks. We've also done that for IT. We had a vendor contract, we had a contract with a vendor for sixteen years. That contract was going to go up significantly. We decided, yes, you know what, I think we can do this better on our own, and we were fortunate to hire a strong IT director. We've saved money, we've rolled back cost to the fiscal oh-six, oh-seven period, we've combined it with our, with the IT shop and, and social services, and we're trying to go forward to improve the services. Those are, those are strong things that we're trying to do to improve our fiscal shop. And again, it benefits the general fund, and if it benefits the general fund, it benefits you folks. So, in conclusion, and I will add, add two more things before I conclude. One is, this year's budget is a very static budget. It kind of reflects the, the negotiations that we're going through. We've, we're only negotiating for a one-year period, because quite frankly, we can't predict what's going to happen a year from now. Look at all of what's happened this year economically. State budget that to say it's dysfunctional would be an understatement. So, this budget reflects one position being added, and that's in our autopsy, that's in our, our coroner's office. We're also imposing a modified hiring freeze. We have to make sure, this office has to make sure that our unsupvented departments don't, the hiring reflects the revenues that we're bringing in. So, we're going to have a modified hiring freeze that we're going to roll out with the, with the budget hearings this afternoon. So, we're doing what we can. We recognize that there's, we still have some, some, some ways to go, but it's, again, it's something that we've, it's taken us years and years to get to this point, and it's going to take us some time to dig out. We feel we're taking a step in the right direction, we're putting more money on for family, we're continuing to cover your single employees, and it's, we're also trying to put more money on the table in the future. Can we guarantee that? Of course, we can't. We can't guarantee what the future holds. But we're, again, we're moving in the right direction. We've also, again, like I said before, we've frozen higher-paid employees. New people that come in, they're not going to get paid more than what they need for insurance, they're going to get paid a flat a thousand-dollar amount. And we're trying to redirect as many of those dollars for family needs, because we recognize your needs. So, at this point, Madam Chair and Board, I, I have to, with all, with the county's fiscal house, my, my number-one priority, I recommend that we, that we go forward with our last, fifth and final offer to the, to this union, and we go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rousseau. You know, this is a process, it was interesting to hear that this is something that doesn't happen very often, doesn't happen in very many places, something that we take very seriously. Since I've been on this board, it's the first time I can recall having this type of proceeding. I think it speaks to the, to the fiscal issues that we face in the state of California. But I'd like to acknowledge all of the problems and issues that were raised today. They're all very important. I have, I have appreciated the dialogue, I believe it was open, and it's not easy to stand up and tell your personal story, and I do appreciate those that did that and shared with us today. And there's a part of me, gentlemen, I will share with you, that if I thought we could go back to the table and continue this negotiation, if there was something to be gained, I would be in favor of that. I don't know how you feel, I'm sure you will express that to me, how you feel. But, I mean, the proposal we saw today was different than at least this supervisor believes she had seen before. Maybe I just missed something, but it looked different than what the SEIU had been proposing before. But I don't know. I mean, we can look at the numbers again, we can look at them up and down and back and forth, and I don't know that they change. And maybe I'm a Pollyanna or overly optimistic, I've been accused of that before. But if it, if a little more talking or a little more time would make a difference, I would be in favor of that. I don't know how you all feel, you can, you can tell me now.
Madam Chairman, I, I realize that things have changed somewhat from the last, the final that was made, offer made at the, at the mediation by the union, but as I understand the costing, it's a reduction from twenty-five million dollars above and beyond what's on the table down to twenty-one million dollars. So, so we're still talking about a substantial amount of money.
Please.
To me, it's-
I would just ask that you let the supervisor express his thoughts. Thank you.
To me, and I've been on the board long enough, this is my tenth year, that we have gone through this once before while I was on the board with the Deputy Sheriff's Association. So, I, we have gone through this process in the past. And it is, I think, worthwhile to, to have the opportunity for employees to vent, for the board to hear that, for the board to respond to that. As a board member, I have two responsibilities. One is to the county and to its people. You all provide the services which go out to the people of Tulare County, you make the county work, I don't do it, this dais doesn't do it, it's you folks that do it, and other folks are our employees. So, our responsibility is to provide those services that are needed to the, to the, to residents of Tulare County. The other responsibility we have is to our employees, to provide them with the best wages that we can, provide to them benefits. Overlying the whole thing, however, is fiscal responsibility. We have to live within our means, Tulare County has done a good job of living within its means. Some of our neighboring cities and counties have chosen not to live in their means, so one is in bankruptcy, others are on the verge of bankruptcy, others are trying to get givebacks from their unions. To me, we have tried to work very hard to provide what we can for our employees. I think that this process that the CEO talked about is genuine, it's real. We are committed to trying to rectify our employee wages and benefits as we go forward, but it is not one thing that is accomplished in one bargaining unit session or one season. It will take time to be corrected, and I believe that's the direction this board is committed to moving. But given the resources that we have today, I believe that the four-point-four percent that's on the table that is here for approval is a stretch by the county, but one that we feel prudently that we can make and be sustained. And so, I would move to adopt the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Nobody wants to go with me and talk about it a little bit longer? I guess I'll call for the question, and then we'll find out.
I will, real quickly, having talked with Tim, understand that it was very, the negotiations always went very well, everyone was respectful of each other, Tom, appreciate that. You've been spoken of very highly here, and I want to, you know, appreciate, I appreciate everyone's demeanor while we've been here. There's been no hooping, hollering, yelling, things of that nature, and I appreciate that.
Okay, cast your votes, please.
Do I have your supervisor call right?
I thought I hit it.
For some reason, it's not showing, I'll need you to call.
There it is. Evidently, I won't comment further. Thank you. Thank you all for your kind attendance and-
Madam Chairman, you may want to take item two before the people leave, because that is related to this.
Item six.
I'm sorry, item six.
Item six. All right.
Are you talking about the IT items?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I was going to take a quick recess, but maybe we don't need to do that. Okay. Before us, we have item six.
Madam Chairman, do you have to have this presented, or can we just go to the action?
I don't think so.
This, this is related to item number five, and this would be amending the position allocation listing for the IT department reclassification, and I would move approval of that item.
Second.
Cast your votes, please. Motion passes. Chair would like to take a ten-minute recess. Thank you. We do have some more serious business day. Rousseau, I don't know about your method for seeing the future and knowing somehow that our budget hearings would be the day after whatever the heck that was that went on in the middle of the night in Sacramento. I don't know whether you're wise or whether you're just lucky. Or maybe neither or the above. But we do have a few items on the consent calendar, gentlemen, let's move to that first.
Motion approved, consent calendar one through four.
Second.
Cast your votes, please. Motion passes unanimously. All right, should we do, and we did that one, so now we'll just go to the budget hearing. Yes? All right.
You can put off public comment, board matter items till the end, then?
Oh. We don't have to, I guess we can do it now, before, I'm sorry, Kristen, I guess, I don't know what to do. At Supervisor Worley's request, we'll now go to public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the board about matters under their purview, but not on the agenda today, now would be the time. Certainly. Well, that's never our intention, sir, that's, we do print it on the agenda so that everyone will know it does come at the end. But welcome and thank you, we just need your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, my name is Chad Tafti. Two issues that I'm here in front of boards today, it's my understanding that a internal investigation was done on the code compliance department, and I'm just curious if that will be ever open to the public review. And also, I had a complaint myself, which I believe Mr. Ruzak had confirmed, and I have not got any kind of response to that. Just wondering if that's also something that's going to be released shortly.
Something we'll have to take under advisement, but we appreciate you making us aware of it.
Again, I'll be here next week again if you can check into that public comment. Thank you.
I make no promises, but you're welcome to be here with us every week, sir.
Well, it seems like one of these departments doesn't really make any difference, I figured I'd come to the board and hopefully I'll get a little bit of attention. Again, thank you for listening to me, have a good day.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we will move to the budget hearings. And Mr. Rousseau, am I turning this over to you?
Yes, you are.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Once again, Gene Rousseau, County Administrative Officer. And before I start, I would like to, I would like to wish the Assistant County Administrative Officer a happy fiftieth birthday.
And I'm, I'm sure, not that I speak for her, but I'm sure she greatly appreciates that, and the fact, the fact that it is now out there on the internet, and that it will be actually listed in the board record and preserved on tape forever.
Your art mail will be waiting for you.
Yes. Sorry, I was only supposed to say happy birthday, so I apologize, Kristen.
Supervisor Cox is just worried about cake.
I'm just worried about cake.
That's right.
Go ahead. All right, we do digress, and I want to get off schedule here.
And again, secondly, before I start, I'd like to thank the department heads. This was, I want to thank them for the cooperation. It was interesting reading through this, this large book for, I strongly suggest you take a look at it. Having reread each department's narratives three, four, five, six times, it just, it really, it really struck me how much positive things are going on in our county, and the departments are getting a lot of things done, and, and this is a good reflection of it. So, please do take a look at it, there's a lot of, a lot of positive things going on. I, you know, I've, I've referred to this year's budget as a hunker-down-type budget, and having watched Hurricane Ivan and Gustaf lately, and the storm that hit Wall Street yesterday, I thought that-
We're not going to let you stay home anymore.
I thought that hunker-down was a good, appropriate term for what this budget reflects, and that's really hunkering down to, to hopefully absorb what the economy and what the state and feds are going to do to us eventually. So, that being said, everybody know how to do this, there we go. A lot has happened in the last year that's made this, this environment that we're preparing this budget in very problematic. You know, Bear Stearns, an eighty-five-year-old company, was bailed out by the feds in March of 2008 and bought out by JP Morgan in May of this year. Yesterday Merrill Lynch, a ninety-four-year-old company, was bought out by BFA to avoid potential bankruptcy. Lehman Brothers- Lehman Brothers, a hundred-and-fifty-eight-year-old company that was strong in the industrial revolution, filed for bankruptcy yesterday. Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, the two largest quasi-private companies with six trillion in mortgage debt holdings, was taken over by the feds. And AIG, we were just talking about AIG, the largest insurer in the world, has been strong forever and ever, is very close to collapse.
Are we still doing business with those folks?
We're still doing a lot of business with them.
Let's check.
So the environment, you know, the environment is very, it's very troubling. Alan Greenspan, who I quoted three years ago when I was mentioning rational exuberance and talking about our growth and our budget, said this is a once-in-a-century crisis that has a ways to go, and I would agree with him, unfortunately. So with that being said, in addition to what we've seen on TV, we know that one county in Alabama has declared bankruptcy, and the city of Vallejo in California has also. The state housing market is the worst in the century. In doing some, some research for my budget, my budget memo, I noted that California has six of the top ten cities in the United States in terms of foreclosure. The top three cities are in our northern part of our valley, Merced, Modesto, and Stockton. Of the top, let's see, so we have six of the top ten cities have significant foreclosure problems. That, again, is a part of the environment that we are, we are preparing this budget in. Last but not least, our state budget, that we just found out last night, the legislature has come to agreement on a shady budget at best, that puts off difficult decisions to future legislative groups, including, hopefully, the person next to me. Again, that coupled with the, with the economy and with the housing market collapse has made it a very interesting environment to prepare this budget in. Local challenges and needs. Our local revenues are static, and we're not projecting much growth in the future. We've had significant growth in our discretionary revenues due to assessed value growth. We've had, in the last three years, before this last year, we had an average assessed value growth of fourteen point two-two percent. It's huge. Two thousand four, sixteen percent, two thousand five, fourteen percent, two thousand six, twelve percent, almost, and this last year, it backed down to normal five point two percent. We've seen almost a fifty percent growth in assessed value in the last four years. The prior sixteen years, prior to two thousand four, the average, the yearly average was five point five-three percent. The three-year average excluding this year was fourteen point two percent. So that, as we discussed with SEIU, we had, we had a choice to make as a county, and I always refer to the three pots, add new bodies, put more money towards our salary benefit package, and put some towards capital, and we did a little of both, of all three, excuse me. Other challenges, like we've said, and like I said earlier, and I firmly believe it, our salary and benefits package is generally not competitive with our local agencies, and that's an ongoing challenge, and something that Tim Huntley has, has been very creative in trying to come up with ways to bridge the gap. And our staffing needs are significant, and because of growth in service requirements. That's really, along with our capital facility needs, there's a reason why we're meeting with the cities. We recognize that their, their increase in their public safety, law enforcement folks has had an impact on our justice system. We've had more people going through our correctional facilities, we've, people are flooding in the courts and impacting the public defender and DA's offices. They could probably use more bodies. We need more bodies in the correctional area. Our chief legal counsel to my left, if you asked her, she could probably use a body or two. There are needs across the board. And last but not least, our capital facility needs. I've talked about that one study, it is, it is kind of an intimidating study to the extent that a lot of our facilities are old, over fifty of the hundred and twenty, we don't know how old they are because they're so old, another fifty are between twenty-five and fifty years old, that's eighty percent of our buildings are very, very, very old. Another reason why we need to get impact fees in place to help offset the growth component of future capital needs, and again, is another reason why we're talking to our cities, so they'll cooperate in that endeavor. In addition to, you know, I mentioned that the revenues being static, you know, sales taxes have been, have been fairly static, too. Not only in Tulare County, but in the state as a whole. So when you consider that sixty percent of your discretionary revenues are tied to assessed value growth, and the, and the future doesn't look positive, and sales taxes are flat, your discretionary revenues aren't going to be growing much in the next couple of years. So where does that take us? Well, it's important that we use protocols when developing budgets to make sure that we toe the line and we don't get off course like we've seen our state, federal, and some of our local agencies do. We will, I will talk about bullet points one, two, and four later in the presentation. I want to concentrate a little on the third bullet point, that continue to improve the structural budget. That's something that has been, something we've been trying to do for the last few years, and we've done a pretty good job. How do we do that? Well, we're trying to reduce the structural fund balance, and that's, that's one thing that, that is going to be a challenge. It is fairly high, but it is, it is definitely manageable, and it's come down over two years ago. We've also conservatively budgeted revenues in order to prepare for economic downturns. This year's budget of the five percent growth in assessed value, we are budgeting a one percent growth in those related revenues. We're gonna hold four percent to help offset what, what the future holds. Last year's budget, we had a twelve percent AV growth. We budgeted five percent of the AV growth, we left seven for this year, and it's helped us not only cover salary and benefit increases, but a cost of doing business, and we'd like to think and hope that the, our approach this year will do the same. We've also reduced and or eliminated outside the subvented world budgeted salary savings. We've reduced it from over two million to around two hundred thousand. We can always use it going forward if we need to, to buy some time. We paid down some external debt and tried to use internal financing as much as possible. We've been buying our cars with workers' comp monies, thank you, counsel, in order to reduce our interest costs, and to get rid of cars that need to get rid of instead of having to wait for pink slips at the end of the three-year leasing period. So that's, that's helped us quite a bit. And we've continued to look for ways to reduce ongoing operational costs. We put in five new IT systems, accounting system, four new systems in the, in the justice arena that I would like to think has improved their, their productivity, and will continue to, to do that in other ways. I mentioned earlier in front of SEIU, we did the same with our fire department and our IT department. Those are significant changes, and again, have, have all benefited the general fund. So here's a global overview of the budget. Take a little sip, not quite as loud as the first man. And as you can see, it is a hunker-down, static, current service level type of budget. The general fund is, is a little lower than last year predominantly because of the social services reductions. Let's see, so the total budget last year was nine hundred and fourteen million, and it's slated to increase a little bit by nine hundred and sixty million dollars. I've been asked, well, Gene, why is it increasing? Because, you know, you keep telling us things, times are getting tough, and this is a static current service level budget, explain this to me. Well, I would say generally, we've, in a nutshell, we've got approximately twenty-five million dollars more in road fund monies, that's, that, that explains a special revenue increase. Enterprise fund is going to be using some reserves to help expansion of their visalia landfill and what have you. We transferred our IT functions out of the general fund into internal service fund, that's predominantly the increase there. And the auditors have been after us for a while to, to budget the full level of reserves in some of our ISF and enterprises, and that's what we did in this year's budget. Other than that, it's been a fairly static budget. So, again, the budget increased overall by forty-four point six million, or a little bit less than five percent over last year. However, the general fund has decreases, and again, because of the transfer of the information technology charges out of the general fund into an ISF, and the, and the growth in salary and benefits predominantly. And outside the general fund, like I mentioned, the road fund and solid rate increases are the justifications or reasons why those types of funds increased. Let's see here. The county's general fund, and I always like this slide, it's kind of redundant, but it says that the county's general fund is a main operating fund, and all, it will account for all the activities that aren't required to be budgeted for or accounted for in other funds. So you won't find the library in the general fund because the library has its own special revenue fund. That fund can only be used for library purposes. You won't find the roads fund in the general fund because it's its own special revenue fund. Those monies, although they've increased by twenty-five million dollars, we can't use those for our salary and benefit increases. They can only be used for road purposes. Plus, I think Supervisor Cox wouldn't allow us to use it for salary and benefit increases.
Side of the bus that would be on your-
So I just wanted to make that clear, that the general fund accounts for everything that isn't required, that isn't required to be accounted for separately. The general fund budget over the last five years, as you can see, has grown, has grown quite a bit. It's grown by, let's see, five point five-eight percent from two thousand four, five to two thousand five, six, to almost thirteen percent from five, six to six, seven, eight point seven percent from six, seven to seven, eight, to this year. It's actually decreased by about a one and a half percent. The general fund overview, again, it increased by nine point one million, or one and a half percent over last year's. The Health and Human Services Agency alone contracted by fifteen point five million, or almost four percent, and most likely will contract further in the next couple of months, unfortunately, with additional bad news from our state brethren up in Sacramento. As I mentioned, the information technology services, which were predominantly budgeted for in miscellaneous admin, have been moved out to an internal service fund. Each department will continue to pay IT, but it will go to an ISF fund, and that was combined with the Health and Human Services Agency, MIS group, in June of this year, and we look forward to, from continued progress in that area. Public safety departments, which I'll show you in a little bit, they increased, again, continuing this board's emphasis on public safety. They're, those four departments, the sheriff, DA, public defender, and probation increased by eight point five million, or almost seven percent over last year. And this is important, the current year budget doesn't reflect any state reductions in unsubvented departments. In our HHSA area, we do have significant reductions. In the unsubvented areas, we didn't put the reductions in because, quite frankly, we didn't know what they were until last night at two in the morning, and we didn't quite have enough time to redo this, this budget book, although I guess we would have wanted to. So what, what we did is we set aside three point five million to cover any one-time, one-time reductions, and we hope that's enough. So the general fund, net county costs, what this reflects is what do we do with our discretionary revenues and countywide, and countywide fund balance? Again, like I said earlier, it promotes the, the funding of public safety with continued growth. Any other increases are due primarily to salary and benefit increases since there's only one, one full-time position added in this budget, and approximately, let's see here, we did reduce positions, and I want to refer back to one of the tenets, the budgeting tenets that we follow. Grant-funded programs must be reduced, eliminated when funding is reduced or eliminated. So with that being said, you'll find in this budget book, the Action Project deleted or deleted twelve positions because their funding has been reduced and/or eliminated. The Sheriff's Department reduced fourteen and a half positions because of reduced funding. The probation department, three positions, and Health and Human Services, twenty-six and a half positions, all unfilled, we're not laying anyone off, but we've reduced those positions because the grant dollars have dried up. That's a good thing. This is, this is an example, and I'll go back to another one of my tenets, the budget tenets that I brought up earlier in the, in the presentation, and this is important because this is what other governments, this is where they make mistakes, and that is budget historically normal revenue amounts, not inflated revenue amounts. And what do I mean by that? If you see up on top, these are two revenue accounts. One is budgeted in the assessors department, the property transfer fees, and the other one is in budgeted as a discretionary revenue. They spiked significantly with the housing boom. And what's, what's easy to do is to increase your revenue estimates and use that growth and plow it into operations. The problem that you have is when they come back down to normal, you've got a shortfall. So what we've tried to do is we've tried to maintain normal estimates of these revenue amounts, even just knowing that their actual amounts are going to come in significantly higher. And that difference between what they come in at and what we budgeted, we call one-time revenues. We call runtime revenues, and we use them for one-time purposes, and that's what we've tried to do, and that's why we have such a large fund balance. We've really stuck to this, tried to stick to this as, as, as much as possible, and, and push those excess revenues in, for one-time purposes, and provide flexibility in case there's some shortfalls in other areas. So how do we use that? So let's look at this first year, this oh-seven, oh-eight. We have budgeted revenues of approximately two million between the two added up, and we have revenues of almost seven and a half million. That's five and a half million in one-time revenues. How are we going to spend those revenues? Well, let's, let's go to this list. Here's a list of our one-time, recommended one-time expenses for this year. We knew we were going to have a significant amount of one-time revenue because of how we budget for normal revenues. And as you can see here, I hate to be, go back and forth, but the property transfer fees, they've already started to adjust back down to normal. They could go down a little bit farther. I'd like to think oh-three, oh-four is probably close to normal, but that's, that's where we're at. Supplemental taxes are still going to be high probably for the next year or two. So back to the one-time. We knew we were going to have, we knew we were going to have a high fund balance, we knew we'd have a significant amount of one-time revenue, so we put some, a one-time bonus on the negotiating table. Once you factor in subvented percentages and how much the feds and state will pick up, to put a five hundred dollar bonus for every employee that works for the county on the table, the net subvented effect would be one point five million. IT investments, we still got a ways to go in a few areas, we need some middleware in the public safety arena, we need to improve our AFAN system and make it more functional, and take advantage of the functionality that it had when we put it in place. We, we put, we developed a rainy day of sorts, rainy day fund of sorts, for potential state reductions of three and a half million dollars. That approximate the state's potential, our exposure to, one-A exposure to the state of about three point two million dollars. And, and what I've told departments is if they've had unsubvented departments, if they have one-time reductions this year in the state budget, we will help cover those costs, but if they're permanent reductions going forward, we're going to have to make some reductions, and that's what we've done. Public safety radios, our sheriff's department has need to upgrade their radios and repeater sites and everything associated with that process, and we are going to put aside one point seven million dollars to start it. We're also reaching out to our city brethren to make, to try to partner with them where it makes sense. There's a number of grant opportunities in that arena that we're pursuing. We're going to fund, we've got additional zoning and planning studies that need to be done out of our resource management agency, some of which relate to the, the updated, updated, updated general plan that we will be finishing next spring, or, excuse me, next summer. These studies are going to-
Is that a promise?
Are-
Depends on what the word finish means.
Yes, we will, we will be, we will be in a position to distribute.
There you go.
There you go. Along with the, the general plan studies, there's a number of zoning studies and other studies that resource management has identified that they need. We put some money aside to do those studies. Parks tree trimming has been an ongoing, one-time use of monies that we put in, we put in another fifty thousand for that. The other category, which is, was always one of Supervisor Cox's favorite categories, vague, undescribed, and what have you, that predominantly is for fuel. vague, undescribed, and what have you, that predominantly is, is for fuel, for our motor pool. If they are short in, in the motor pool charges for the year, because I believe they budgeted $2.87 or 78 cents a gallon in this year's budget, we put some money aside to, to address that. Again, one-time revenues for one-time costs. Other budgets included in this budget. The fire department budget, as I indicated in my SEO presentation, has had a decrease for its second straight year. The library will celebrate the renovation of the Visalia Main Library and the newly-constructed City of Lindsay Library, and we're, we're reviewing the lease as we speak. The road fund budget increases by over $25 million due to increased anticipated revenues in a number of different areas. And the solid waste budget increases by approximately 12 million due to the use of reserves for the Visalia Expansion Project and other projects. And that is my overview of the budget. The process that we would like to follow is to present each group of funds for your consideration, for your review, modification, and approval. Following the buy fund approvals, we will request your direction and authorization for adjustments and then conclude with the adoption of the full budget. At this time, I'm going to call up Captain Wright to do the COPS presentation. And you might ask why we're doing this presentation separately. It's statutorily required that be, be done this way. That's why.
And before you start, Captain Wright, the chairman does not want to be remiss in her duties, and when I opened this budget hearings, I neglected to make sure that everyone understands that we're convening as the Tulare County Board of Supervisors, Governing Board for the Redevelopment Agencies, In-Home Supportive Services, Public Authority, Terabella Sewer District, and Flood Control District. Captain Wright.
Well, good afternoon, Chairman Conway, members of the board. My name is Captain Greg Wright. I'm the administrative captain for the sheriff's office, and I'm here on behalf of Sheriff Bill Whitman to talk about the citizens' option for public safety funding, which is the COPS funding. Each year, the California Legislature gives counties and cities a variety of funds to supplement local law enforcement budgets. One source of the supplemental law enforcement funding is the citizens' option for public safety or COPS program. COPS funding is apportioned based upon population. The state requires that each county conduct a public hearing to get input from local residents on how the county plans to spend its annual COPS allocation. Traditionally, Tulare County conducts this public hearing at the same Board of Supervisors meeting where the county adopts its annual budget. That's why the hearing for COPS is on today's board agenda. However, as you know, the legislature has just sent the governor a budget for the '08, '09 fiscal year. So this is an estimate. The sheriff's department estimates, based on, on what I read and heard late last night, that the county of Tulare will receive approximately $500,682 in the COPS funds for fiscal year '08, '09. And again, this is based on what happened yesterday. This is only a projection. With that in mind, the sheriff plans to spend the COPS money in the same fashion as last year. And that is to pay for two correctional sergeants in the jails and five patrol deputies. This amounts to or accounts for $375,026 of the projected funding. The balance of the COPS funding projected at $125,655 also comes to the sheriff's department, but is earmarked for the district attorney's office. The district attorney plans to use its COPS allocation to fund or partially fund a deputy district attorney and a DA investigator. And just for the, the state also sends COPS fundings to the county's eight cities, and last year, these allocations totaled $933,969. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions from board members? I'm sorry, as a little aside, not to change the sheriff's figures or whatever, I just was discussing with the CAO. They got an email and says the governor's going to veto the budget, so. But that won't change us from our task at hand. I don't know, I don't know what that means.
We estimated on the 10 percent reduction from last year.
Okay, questions from board members? Hey, it is a public hearing, so I need to open the public hearing. Open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board on the, this program now would be the time. Seeing and hearing none, closing the public hearing, bring it back to the board for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Cast your votes, please. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Captain Wright.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, the materials we'll be working with today will be the, this recommended budget book that I reviewed each section five or six times. The agenda item, the agenda which provides the order of items. The first order of business is to discuss the county's enterprise funds. The enterprise funds are used to account for an activity for which a fee is charged to an external user, users for goods and services. I have no specific comments about these funds, but would be happy to respond to any questions if there are questions. I will list out the enterprise funds as they are listed in the agenda item. Solid waste, transit, C-funds, dash funds, C-15, lemon code water, L-funds that are listed there. And they are, at this point, I request approval of the enterprise funds budgets as presented in the budget book.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Cast your votes, please. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the next order of business or type of budgets are county service areas. They are used or provide activities that are specific to areas and projects. Users in those areas pay fees for these activities. The county service areas, 1 and 2, and zones of benefit are, can be found on page 367 of your budget book. The zones of benefit are El Rancho, Seville, Traver, hopefully I don't mispronounce any, Wells Tracked Water, Delph Colony Sewer, Tonyville, Yedam Sewer, Wells Tracked Sewer, Delph Colony Water, Tulieville, and Yedam Water. I think the first year I was here, I mispronounced Tulieville, so. Anyway, at this point, these budgets are recommended for your approval.
Motion moved.
Okay, approving county service areas, 1 and 2 budget. Cast your votes, please.
Chairman, recuse myself.
Passes unanimously.
The next item.
Okay.
The next group of budgets are the redevelopment agency and the special districts. Your board reviews plans and project statements for these throughout the year. Today's action establishes the annual budget for each activity. The special districts and redevelopment agency budgets can be found starting on page 373 in this voluminous book here. And those, those budgets are Cutler Dash Arosi, Goshen, Poplar Cotton Center, Cutler Arosi Remediation, Ivanhoe, Rich Grove, Early Mark, Pixley, Traver, the Public Authority In-Home Support Services, the Terabella Sewer District, and last but not least, Tulare County Flood Control District. If there are no questions, approval of these budgets is requested as recommended.
Motion moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, please. Motion passes 4 to 0 with Supervisor Cox recusing himself.
Internal service funds are used to account for goods or services provided by one department or agency to other departments or agencies, either against their will or in compliance with their will. These funds are, operate on a cost reimbursement basis. And unlike enterprise funds, those services are provided to external users that pay fees. Internal services are provided to ourselves in areas that we feel we can beat this private sector. These funds operate on a cost reimbursement basis, and I will address information technology and communications separately since they've been added to the ISF budgets. Approval of the internal service budgets is requested at this time.
Motion moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Cast your votes, please.
And I didn't read them, I didn't list them out before you approved them, but I'll take this opportunity to do that. The internal service fund budgets that you just approved are the ones that are overseen by county council, that we have a lot of business with AIG apparently, is workers' compensation, general liability, property insurance, and medical malpractice. The Resource Management Agency manages the other internal service funds, and they are building maintenance, copier, custodial services, grounds maintenance, mail services, motor pool, print services, and utilities.
And for the record, we did vote, but we did have the items in front of us. We weren't just voting.
Good deal. Sounds good. And those can be found on pages, starting on pages 320 and 325. The two ISFs that, that I'd like to speak to about now is information technology and communications. As this board is aware, it terminated its contract with the, with the vendor that provided IT services. And just, in last fiscal year, we, in a matter of a few months, built an IT department and have since combined it with our, our IT brethren at our social services department. And thank goodness, we have, can go forward with the combining and the equity adjustments for those folks, and we can go forward with that combination. Again, the combination, the IT and development of our IT department has saved the general fund a significant amount of money, has improved overall service levels. It's really put our own IT folks in departments, whereas before you'd have to ask the vendor and pay for money on the side. We've really, we've got some dedicated IT folks in the departments helping them out. That's, we've seen a lot of improvement. The communications ISF was, was folded in, the services were folded into information technology. Next year, it will be, we will budget a combined department this year. Due to the, the timing, we weren't able to do that. But all those functionalities, those services will be provided by our combined IT department. And with the director's goal of installing voiceover IP throughout the county, it just made sense to combine, to combine communications with information technology, and that's what we did. So that's that. Now I'll talk about.
Need a motion.
We need to vote on that?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
I don't believe.
Chose it on our script.
We've already approved the internal service fund budgets.
But you didn't, you did not include them.
Okay, go ahead and vote then.
So moved.
Second.
Cast your votes, please.
Stay with the script, Jim.
Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Summers, do you need a break?
Thank God for, for scripts.
Do you need a break?
Yeah, I probably do, but let's continue.
All right.
The operating fund budgets are the core funds that provide services within the county. The capital projects fund and fire fund will be presented separately. Approval of the operating funds listed as consent budgets is requested.
Motion on the operating fund budgets as listed.
We're not going to list them?
I will list them now. Aviation fund, building debt service, child support services, child and families, first administration, they all start on page 231, by the way.
Thank you.
Equipment debt service, fire, fishing game, health realignment, engine health, library, mental health realignment, pension obligation bond, roads, social services realignment, tobacco settlement proceeds, and last but not least, workforce investment board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Cast your votes, please. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I would like to introduce Brian Summers, the Capital Projects Coordinator, to present the Capital Projects budget at this time.
Can I get a short copy? You got the copy finished, though? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The Capital Projects fiscal year 2009 budget is presented for your review and approval. In review of fiscal year 2008, 44 projects were initiated and 28 projects were completed. Total expenditures for fiscal year 2008 were $7,308,617. Highlights include the Cutler Arosi Sheriff Substation was completed November of 2007, and our Visalia Library Project, which will be completed this month. And as you may have noticed, the library is featured on the cover of this year's budget book, and our thanks to Rodney Sores, a library employee, for taking that picture. For fiscal year 2009, new categories of committed capital projects and discretionary capital projects were developed. Committed capital projects are defined as those that have been previously budgeted and/or obligated by your board and are in various stages of progress. A total of 20 committed projects are budgeted for 2009. Discretionary projects are defined as those projects that are submitted to your board for consideration and are recommended for approval. A total of 30 discretionary projects are included for your board's review. The total recommended budget for fiscal year 2009 is $15,995,312 and consists of $13,637,856 in committed projects and $2,357,456 in discretionary projects. And this will be offset by $6,612,943 in revenues and a carryover fund balance of $9,382,369,000, leaving a projected fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2009 of In conclusion, approval of the Capital Projects budget is requested, and I will be happy to respond to any questions.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Cast your votes, please. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Summers.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Our final group of budgets comprise a general fund budget. The action, project, and contingency budget will be handled separately. Again, I would like to thank and commend the department heads and agency directors for their help in presenting budgets that meet the budget allocations. There have been some changes to position allocations, reclassifications, and development of new classification specifications within these budgets. These budgets are fully agreed with the county administrative officer's recommendation and are the agriculture commissioner, the assessor clerk recorder, the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector, registered voters, the board of supervisors, capital acquisitions, central telephone services, COPS, cooperative extension, county administrative office, county council, county revenues, district attorney, gang task force, Health and Human Services Agency, human resources and development, Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act, Missland's Administration, Missland's Criminal Justice, probation, public defender, purchasing, resource management agency, rural crime prevention, and last but not least, sheriff, coroner.
Say that three, three times real fast. Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Cast your votes, please. Motion passes unanimously.
And I will wind this down by talking a little bit about the, the action project. The action project budget unit was, was, was reduced to zero, and 12 of the 15 positions were eliminated. Three of the positions, 3.5 of the positions have been moved to the district attorney's general fund budget while funding continues. I'm also going to, as a part of this budget, have a hiring freeze or a modified hiring process. All new hires will be reviewed by this office. There are a number of exemptions for public safety and other things that we will discuss as, as requests come to the office. We will send out to department heads a list of the exemptions and, and review any position requests with you from this point forward. Position allocation and classification schedules have been changed, again, like I've said, and reclassifications and classification specifications have also. That's it for the budget.
Chairman, I would move to approve the action bud, project budget, the hiring freeze, and changes to position allocations, reclassifications, and classification specifications.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, please. Motion passes unanimously.
Since the general fund has been approved in its entirety, the contingency is ready for your approval as recommended.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Cast your votes, please. Motion passes unanimously.
As with all budgets, when working with this number of entries and entities, some adjustments may need to bring the budget into final balance. We are requesting your authorization for the auditor, controller. We are requesting your authorization for the auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector to make necessary minor adjustments in order to bring the fiscal year 2008-09 budget into final balance. So, the last directions are authorize the auditor, controller to make the necessary adjustments, and other directions as needed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Cast your votes, please. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Madam Chairman, members of the board, the final action requested today is the final budget adoption. This action incorporates all the actions taken during the budget hearings and provides for final budget approval. Adoption of the budgets for all funds and activities as modified during the final budget hearings is requested.
Madam Chair, this motion include, I'm trying to find the-
Budgets for all funds and activities as modified during the final budget hearings?
Yes, but there was a group of budgets from which, here it is, the redevelopment and special agency consent budgets, Supervisor Cox recused himself, so that motion would take into account his nonparticipation in that group. Okay? One of you would be so kind.
I would move approval.
Motion and a second. Cast your votes, please. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you for the actions taken today.
Are we going to get a veto from Sacramento?
We might.
It's kind of like a wedding, Gene. You know, you spend all the time being ready for the wedding, and 15 minutes later, it's all over.
No, it isn't. Lasts for years.
Supervisor Ashida, I would remind you that this is being recorded and all remarks are listed for the record, sir. Would you want to thank your team, your budget team or anything?
Yes, I would like to thank the budget team from the CO's office, Kristin Bennett, Martin Meyer, Paul Barrero, Lynn Gregory, and Dana Wild. I appreciate your efforts. And everyone else, Kathy Bradford, Patsy Hoag, and Carrie. We appreciate your efforts. Thank you for the reminder.
Okay. Well, I would like to say we're done, but we're not. Counsel, we have further need for closed session?
You forgot board, you forgot board matters.
Oh, I'm sorry. You actually, okay, I will do that. I'll start with you, Supervisor Worthy.
I think you all, I got this in my board package for the San Joaquin Valley Air Push Control District Governing Board meeting coming up this Thursday. It's a report to the community. I thought it was very informative, it's succinct, and so I asked our staff to make copies for each of you. I think it will help you to understand where we are, where we've come from, where we're going, and what we're doing, and I think it's a-
Add to our reading pleasure.
Absolutely. Well, it's also a resource material to have, so if somebody asks you, what the heck are they doing up there? You know, you can look at this and we'll tell you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Cox?
Nothing today.
Nothing today. Supervisor Ashida?
There hasn't been a lot of-
Remember, it's on the record. Sorry.
There's been some press, but not a lot, but we have a fire in the park. It's called a hidden fire, and it's going to become a very serious fire. In fact, they're moving in what they call a mobile fire prepared center, which will be located at, I think it's Horse Creek, up by the dam, up by Terminus Lake. So, right now, they've closed a trail to Crystal Cave, and that's generally where the area of the fire is. And the canopy's gotten so thick, they can't hit it from the air any longer, so we're going to bring in a lot of ground crew people. So, that's one of the major fires we have. We have an 8,000 acre fire in the Tohippity area, and that's also burning in the park in the Sierra National Forest. This Wednesday evening at 6:30 at the Farmersville Elementary School, Southern Cal, excuse me, California Public Utilities Commission's having a hearing on the proposed power transmission lines, and the hearing is to address the EIR concerns. They're also having a meeting in Woodlake at 6:30. I'm not sure where it's going to be at, but that's all I have.
Supervisor Ennis?
Nothing.
Okay. Nor do I. Counsel?
I do have need for closed session. As indicated on your board's regular and closed session agenda, items A through F, I do not anticipate any amendments.
Okay. With that, we'll adjourn to a closed session. Thank you all for being here with us today.